Call this meeting to order if we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call please.
Ister Savage here.
Roche's here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Brumbo.
Here.
Uh, there was an executive session meeting held on August nineteenth and tonight prior to the council meeting to discuss real property and personnel. Are there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Please state your name ma'am.
Frankie Lizer.
And whatever you want to say, Brandon. And that's why I wanted to say that's okay too.
Sorry, so I have a public comment about ordinance thirty-five dash one reducing the amount of police officers. As a citizen of the community, this is very disturbing to me. I think our police force actually should be more around twenty officers. You have about ten officers on staff now, most working twelve-hour days, some have vacation. A lot of times with one officer on duty. You have Shmoke and Bam that used to back Sundary up, who from what I understand is down to one officer. Norian Point operates with one officer. State Police is spread throughout and they're shorthanded. I don't think this is something that should be taken lightly. You can't rely on grant funds to hire officers. And I hope that you consider this before you have a reduction.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Uh, Victoria Rosenkranz. First off, I'm gonna back this young lady. First, I wanted to talk a little bit here, um, looking at agendas and, you know, I've been here for many years and I just want to remind council that the city is some very current functional organization chart. At that top is some very residents, okay? And your city should, your treasurer, your controller, your city engineer, your city solicitor, your health officer. Also just want to add and encourage this council moving forward because it needs to stop and it needs to change tonight. And when local government leaders refuse to answer questions, you become your own worst enemy. I understand that it's not feasible to discuss and resolve all issues raised by speakers during the public comment period. Refusing to comment when citizens ask questions is a misunderstanding of public duty. You have a responsibility to disseminate pertinent city-related information and a refusal could indicate a failure to fulfill this obligation unless being advised by the city solicitors to not comment. City council officials have an ethical and professional responsibility to keep the citizens of Sundary adequately informed of all municipal measures, incidents directly related to gate duties of those city officials. This is especially true when it involves three most basic essential functions of local government and that is law enforcement, that is fire protection, and that is public security safety services. I'm requesting that council share regular updates on operations, policies, and decision-making processes to keep citizens informed and noting on the agenda that an update will be given on a particular matter or project so that citizens are informed and this will take place at a scheduled meeting. I've spent all day long fact-reading and checking and all this and this is what happened when this agenda came out. All it says is repeal ordinance three, thirty-five dash one number of presenters under chapter twenty-five police force and that's all it says. So that disseminates out into the community and yes, I was one of them. And it was really disheartening that our city administrator being here all these years, the first time that he wants to come out on my social media page and put all this information out there. I, I applaud him for that, but he waited till the night before his last day to come out and speak to the citizens with the information, which I found to be really disheartening. So I hope that you take this into consideration, not for me, but for the citizens because you work for us.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name sir.
Alpha of Police Department. Right now, uh, if there's an incident, an officer is calling and he is, I think, responsible to do the detective work to solve a case. We need a detective. We used to have one years ago. And also, when I lived down in New Jersey, most police departments had a juvenile officer. This is somebody who investigated juvenile complaints and offenses. I also think we need more officers. We need a walking man on the street during the day. And I know the department where I lived in New Jersey had a walking officer until about nine o'clock at night and then he got in a patrol car with a regular officer who's assigned to that patrol car for the rest of the shift. So I think the police departments need some revamping. And maybe they should consider the civil service thirty-day rotation cycle, which either might think a day off during the week and a weekend, one weekend off during the week, during the month. So I think there's a lot that can be done to improve the police department and the safety of our city.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, uh, moving on, uh, project Wise Markets, Councilman Barnhart or Mr. Thomas, whoever wants to take it.
Yep, uh, so let me agree here. So the planning commission reviewed this plan as did our office and recommend conditional approval. Free waiver were previously granted by this body. So we would be looking, um, uh, for a, yeah, for a motion for conditional approval of the Wise Markets kiosk expansion per our recommendation and recommendation of the planning commission.
Second. No, sorry.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. Brumbo.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright, uh, moving on, Police Assembly Chief.
Yeah, so basically, I put everything together for the, the year, so from January twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-five to August twenty. I just, I wanted to basically put together so you know how many calls of service basically were. Today, this would be more than five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine calls of service. Traffic stops for the year, uh, they paid one thousand and ten traffic stops. They paid two hundred and forty-six traffic citations, three hundred and eight warnings, the rest being verbal warnings. So showing some discretion with our guys, which I like to see that. Non-traffic, a hundred and nine. Criminal complaints, uh, they have arrested two hundred and ninety-three individuals to date. Phone calls, basically broke down, it'll stay up until August, five thousand two hundred and seventy-three. That's on top of five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine phone calls for service, or incidents for service. Uh, police patrol miles from January to August, it is thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy-one miles. Child is now in age for that. Parking tickets issued, uh, between January and August, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six. Uh, again, with the allegations, criminal allegations filed, they've done two hundred and ninety-three of those allegations.
Alright, then Chief, uh, keep on moving on here, uh, amending the shade tree ordinance, uh, Councilman Barnhart.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the shade tree ordinance. Put this through the first reading as Bill twenty-two-five dash zero four.
Second. Brumbo.
Yes.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Uh, keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Like to approve a contract, make a motion to approve a contract for NEIC for training. The code officers will be getting pretty extensive training all of that.
Alright, and that, just to verify that isn't your budget, correct?
It isn't my budget.
Alright, I will second. Brumbo.
Yes.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on, uh, police UTV, police UTV municipal or sale. So I know, uh, Councilman Barnhart wanted to try to do that with the COG office. I know we want to do that with ours also, either municipal or sale or trade-in, whatever, because the UTV has seen better days. So I know, Councilman Barnhart, do you remember what you, when you had for a reserve one year, was it fifteen or?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? So we'll go out with the same with the reserve on municipal bit of sixteen or a sale, whichever we get the highest, uh, price for. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Do we have one on there yet?
No, I mean, we've been talking about, talking about, we just, it never got to that point yet. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page, whether it's. So I just want to make.
Nobody's wrong, you know, you don't have to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just want to make sure we're on the same page with that, whether it's a sale or municipal, either or. So I'll make the motion to put that on for a reserve of sixteen. Do I have a second?
Brumbo.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, Councilman Barnhart.
This is Masonic Lodge, uh, Masonic District forty-six, they want to plant a liberty tree. I'm not familiar with that. This is actually, in my opinion, be history in the making. Going to plant it at the north end of Memorial Drive. I talked to Councilman Ister and we got a, the only site, Sundary, that wouldn't interfere with anything. It's up near the tennis courts. Uh, it's gonna be October eleventh at, uh, two o'clock, they're gonna have the ceremony. So like I said, it is, you don't know what a liberty tree is, you Google it, you'll see it has a lot of historical value. That's where the, the colonialists met up in Boston underneath the big elm tree in the courts. So they started one of the liberty trees. So that's, there's gonna be one planted in every county in Pennsylvania, somewhere in the select part of county.
And I think you just made like, what, why are we planting it? Like, what's the purpose of, because of the?
The masons, because it's a liberty and signifies freedom of the.
Yeah, freedom for the, you know, for next year for the country, two hundred and fiftyth birthday. So that's the reason behind.
And there also was a plant, it's blank, and I was gonna talk to the Boy Scouts, get some Eagle Scouts to do a trail and, and make a bench for the project. So I can make that a motion to be able to plant one.
Other reason, the size of the trees is why this location was picked.
Yeah, it was, it's gonna be a hundred, when it's done, it'll be, we'll, we'll never see it. It could be a hundred feet high and like five feet around.
Alright, so he's, uh, motion second. Roche's, yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister. Brumbo.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Alright, moving on, uh, new police hires, uh, Chief.
Basically, we're now, at this point, we're kind of officers, looking to get back to, um, hiring the eleventh and twelfth officer at this time, but we're looking, um, at if we cannot get any successful actual employment candidates, if we could go along the same lines as we did last time with sending to the academy. Trying even, it's kind of a, if we want to get the employee through the academy now, can we do an October academy? Do we get them on the street by April? If not, we go in January, we don't have any grandchildren.
And kind of like what we did last time, applying for the grants to cover it, if not, we still have it in our budget because we did the budget for those officers and with one leaving and not getting hired at all. So it is in our budget that we can send them if we don't, aren't fortunate enough to get the grant.
Chief, a question. Me and yours over here, we were discussing the phone burner and getting funding for officers. And that's when the statement was made regarding the fifteen and it would take and hinder our application. Have you done any research on that?
Did a little research on that, basically it would not hinder our, by basically reducing it to ten, it does not hinder. Um, it's actually working in there, it actually takes care of it.
Is that this grant or a whole grant strategy?
That's the federal after.
Well, we had one we were discussing at that time.
Alright, so any questions for anyone? Alright, so I will make the motion so we can have our eligibility list either for ACQ twenty or if we don't get any ACQ twenty for the academy. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumbo.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on, CDPG project slash selection. So I remember last meeting, uh, Jamie came, spoke about what the funds can be used for. There were a bunch of different suggestions that the public and the council had. So we're at that time where we need to make a selection for the project. So I don't know if anybody wants to start off the conversation or Jamie, you want to say anything before we start the conversation? That's up to you.
Alright, so, um, based on the discussion at the last meeting and research I've done in between now and then, my recommendation would be that you put one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars into curb cuts. We'll call it phase one, in case you do additional curb cuts down the road. Fire department air packs for a hundred thousand dollars. Stro alley improvements, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then see how the administration of your program is fifty thousand dollars. That's my recommendation.
Jamie, when you had emails or when we spoke at the last meeting, a lot of us had talked about like breaks and everything and you had indicated in the email that there's, can you explain that just so we all understand? So there was like, there's just better opportunities and different grants somewhere else?
Yeah, absolutely. So with recreation type projects, there are several other ways available, like through DCD and DCNR for other opportunities for that funding. And really in your comprehensive plan that you're working on, the update you're working on now, that should really speak to those kinds of things, like what's the best use, like where to find funding to do those types of projects should be addressed in that plan. So hopefully that comes out of that and it allows you, you know, to look for other resources for recreation as opposed to your CD.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for the, alright Chief. Number of air packs that you need and at what cost?
So right now with downsizing, they just, air packs, six, air packs, three Gs. We'd be at forty-four air packs, which the quote that I got that I emailed with Jamie, as we all know, air pack for a chief is five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So.
And Jamie, how much money, I mean, I know you broke it down, a rough estimate, like you said, X number for curb cuts.
Yeah, I was putting a hundred thousand for the fire department this time.
Okay, and what were the three things that you suggested? You said the curb cuts.
The curb cuts, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one sixteen, and then stro alley for twenty-six thousand. And administration.
And administration. I mean, my own personal opinion, I know we'd always discussed it before, I know Jen's a very advocate for the fire department. Sorry, Steve, I don't know what. But I think take twenty-five for stro alley and put the rest into the air packs for the fire department because, you know, that's always a struggle for them, the raise of funds, that they need to do what they have to do on a daily basis. And I think, like I said, for the curb cuts, I think we should put that money towards the fire department because, you know, that's what they need to be able to do what they do for not just here for all the surrounding communities. That's, that's my opinion.
Right now, we probably have ten air packs of service that are, it's really not worth it.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we need that.
So like I said, that's just my opinion. I mean, I said, if anyone else wants to put in, I said, for stro alley and like the remaining obvious admin fees and stro alley, I think the rest should go into, for the fire department, what they need to do, like I said, they continue to do what they need to do. For, you know, this for, for everybody. No, stro alley and, uh, no, no, forget the curb cuts, not forget the curb cuts, but the funding for the curb cuts, I believe that should go for the fire department and their air packs. The twenty-five thousand for stro alley and the admin fees for what they need to do. That's my opinion, if someone has a different opinion?
Well, the curb cuts do right now. We, it does really give money in there for that. Yeah, I mean, it's, everything, if you do more than an inch worth of work, you have to replace.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing at all.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
What is the plan for stro alley, if it is chosen?
So that, um, if you want to let Jody speak to that, she can tell us a little bit more about that.
I'm prepared. So I can either show you the concept. That's an artist's concept of just making stro alleys. Currently really kind of a dead space, it's a pedestrian walkway and, um, by the market house. We'd like to see a more welcoming space where people can be and gather, we can hold events. And so the recommendation is we're gonna address the need for shade, for safety, for seating and aesthetics, like.
Would that cover the majority of what you guys want to do, the twenty-five thousand? Or would you be like, hey, this would cover, I'm making this up here, phase one, there's still phase two and three to go, to complete?
I'm still working on the exact cost estimates. The, the part that the CDPG money would be used, because we have a ten thousand dollar grant from Lutheran Communities and that would be used for things like doing plantings and the plans, which things that aren't permanent to the structure. Whereas the CDPG money would be used in, for like building the.
Structure, the foundation for what we need.
You know, an archway that matches the Edison Plaza archway. I don't know what those costs will be.
Until you get real numbers, okay.
Yeah, but we're working on that and I think that, um, I don't know, I think twenty-five thousand dollars is a pretty fair amount. And if, if we find out that those physical structure improvements cost more than that, well then we'll.
Address it when we get to that point.
I mean, it's.
The thing stro alley, the impact of the market house is that, and I know John, your daughter has events at stro alley and it's in the middle of the city.
Yeah, it's a, it's a part of life, like you said, helping you guys and your community blueprint and do what you guys have time to do as well.
It's gonna be beneficial to everybody there.
Yeah, that's it.
I would probably standard sustain it also, so I should have it this week.
Okay, I mean, if you have any other questions.
Thank you. So like I said, obviously, I think we all can agree on stro alley, correct? I'm making a vote.
A quick question, Chief. I know you're.
Which one?
Oh, well, I'm sorry. Marty. Two years ago, he bought a bunch of air packs and they mentioned that, and those guys, that they weren't gonna buy them all in a, at one time, because of the fact that it costs every, and. Go ahead.
I'll stop you there. That was when it was probably about eight or ninety, I don't know where you're buying it. At the point right now, where it pointed out, all the packs are being, I mean, it just gave you place. And if it's a matter of doing half of this, I'm putting a law.
How long do they last for? If you, if you get some now, I'll.
The actual brand, the actual brand and I'm only asking, we'll test it.
Yeah.
Are, are still good. When I was appointed, the past device.
Where now?
Right, and, and if we replace the boards in them, it's four or five thousand dollars. Just to be, you know, a hundred percent transparent, we, we are still waiting for your back for a grant, for air packs. But this is the third year that we put in a bid denied. Now, whether it's because companies, once it goes under the wall, and, you know, companies send their stuff and they can be denied for that, I don't need to, or was it, the last time I didn't get past the, the first phase of that?
We were, we, we tried, we tried to do it with other people.
Yeah. What'd they say, the end of September?
End of September. Four minutes should be coming out for the fire.
We, we have to do something, something.
Yeah.
We need to do something to at least.
Start, just get the ball rolling. I mean, like I said, my thing is, they need it, it's a necessity for what they do, for what they do, not only for Sundary, but surrounding communities.
And it's downsizing to exactly what we need, that's not having air packs on the utility trucks. That's our frontline suppression pieces, that's, and, and the free fire.
So you're waiting, that's your answer, but you're waiting for.
The payment.
For the grant.
On the grant.
And when you summon the farmers relief money and match up?
Which, that's my plan in my head.
That, yes, that's what we're at.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, we can sit here and debate back and forth, so I'm just gonna make the motion for twenty-five thousand for stro alley, the administrator fee cost and the remaining going to the fire department for their air packs. Do I have a second?
And cutting curb cuts altogether?
Cutting curb cuts altogether, because I feel, not the curb cuts are not important, I feel the fire department is a bit more important in this sense, in what they need the equipment to do, to do their job, to save the, for everybody.
Yeah, I'll second that. Police, I got one question, now back to the curb cuts. The project we're having, uh, at the Wetlands, we're short a couple curb cuts up there on Lions Street and, uh, Sixth Street because we ran out of money. So we want to lease those done, number, around one.
Six thousand dollars per five minutes, eighteen, pay twenty-five thousand.
I mean, isn't that, I mean, would that be considered a recreational thing? Because going in the recreational park and all those types of things?
No, no, you're on the street. Eighteen curb cuts up there. Do you need eighteen?
Another six thousand dollars apiece. Just stay on for around six thousand dollars apiece. If you get the concrete work, 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 curb work, install the ADA, that year out, they, they average around six thousand apiece.
Four there in that corner, of course.
Good.
That's what he was referring to. So we could take it.
So twenty, about twenty-four thousand?
Thereabouts.
Alright, so how about this?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand for curb cuts at the Wetlands. The twenty-five for stro alley, the administrative fee cost, and then the remaining going to the fire department for their air packs.
So we roughly, uh, two hundred, something like that.
Chief, I put a dent, fire chief, I put a dent in what you guys need.
Anything for you to appreciate.
Anything for you guys.
The only thing I would add though is if they end up getting the grant and get it self-employed somewhere else, can I have money to come back?
I mean, I say that the money's there, if you just get, if they get additional money, get the whole project done. That's, I mean, that's my opinion, because like I said, they got denied the third year in a row. Even if they do get the money, throw the money, not throw the money, put the money back into what it was designed to do. That way, that's good for however many years down the road.
What was the application for, how much money?
Uh, a little over five hundred thousand. Five hundred, five, five hundred and ten was the last one they got. Because when you do a season grant like that, there's speculation that you have to buy, and a little bit of fluffing in the federal money. So yeah, that's the one, a little half a million dollars.
Do you know what's originally, if they're partially funded or awarded, or are they usually funded?
It can go either way. I was looking for the last two times you're right there. Yeah, I don't really expect it the way the climate isn't watching right now, nobody's, yeah, I, I really don't expect it. It's a brutal landscape.
Alright, that's what I'm saying.
That five, ten.
Alright, let's do what we said, twenty-five for, the curb cuts, twenty-five for stro alley, the administrative fee and the rest going to the fire department for the, what they need, air pack. I made the motion, Mr. Councilman Barnhart, do you still have a second?
I'll say.
Wow.
She wants twenty-six.
So twenty-six, sounds good.
For stro alley, the recommendation was twenty thousand per construction. The ER is, is forty-two hundred and then language standards enforcement, which is part of the project, is twenty-seven hundred. So that would be twenty-six thousand, nine hundred if you wanted to go back. If you go with just the three, twenty-five thousand is just gonna be the last money for them.
Okay. So, so we do twenty-six, nine hundred. Twenty-five for the curb cuts. The admin fees.
I went twenty-six, nine.
And the rest go to the, Chief, long, I, I tried, you know, they just keep taking away.
Okay.
Alright, do I have a, Councilman Barnhart, just left a second, okay.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumbo.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to financial management plan here, uh, that's in there for the DCD. Who's gonna be the person of signee? Uh, who wasn't in the past yet? It was Derek, now it's gonna be moving over to Rachel, um, in.
That was Penny.
Oh, she's been petty, I'm sorry. And now it's going over to Rachel in the finance department to be the signee. Uh, any questions, anyone? Alright, so I'll make the motion for the financial management plan, do I have a second?
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumbo.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes. Uh, moving on, for the language coordinator, the resolution, this is just the same thing for the CDPG funds, to have the person named to be the designated need for that?
It was there.
It was there, do we need to name someone?
No, it was the city administrator, now it's going to be the city clerk, be that first.
Okay, do we need to name a person that has been saying city correspondent?
They just need a title.
Alright, so I'll make the motion.
I have a, I have a question about the language and the language. The Board of Commissioners.
Oh, is there a, oh, my gosh.
Is that?
Say that.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's the time.
I thought you knew if somebody read it.
She was testing us and John, he passed.
Good job, John, thank you.
Yeah, alright, we'll get that changed.
I'll give it a check.
Yeah. At the bottom, also, I won't get the change. So, alright, so I'll make the motion to pass resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-one-seven for the language access coordinator. Do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumbo.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Alright, uh, moving on to next resolution, twenty-two-five dash zero-one-eight. Same thing, just naming of the new person, is there any questions for that one?
I, I do.
Okay.
This is just technical questions. Should we have a name in there or should we just leave it city clerk?
This one has to have a name in it, for DCD, sorry. I agree with you, but no, this one doesn't require a name.
So, any questions on that? And.
What is your name?
Yeah. And in there, it does say it's city clerk, which names Jeff that as of, for right now. Any questions on that? Alright, so I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-one-eight. Do I have a second?
Brumbo.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to next one, Bill twenty-two-five dash zero-one-five repeal of chapter twenty-eight, the city administrator ordinance. I'm gonna have Joel speak about that.
Sure. It's my understanding, while I was asked to prepare.
It's my understanding, while I was asked to prepare an ordinance, which would repeal the ordinance that we passed, creating the position of city administrator. This ordinance is simply repealing that section, so that it can be replaced by a separate position, um, which won't be as. Well, it won't be under the third class city code, defined as is the city administrator.
And just to elaborate on that, so with the city administrative position, if it passes, we'd like to go towards a PR person and a grant writer position. So that would, what be, would be replacing those positions. Obviously, the council has started to create job descriptions for those both, once they are finalized, then they will be, obviously advertised for those positions to the public. Obviously, first internally, then externally, for individuals to apply. Questions, anyone? All right, so I'll make the motion to approve Bill zero, excuse me, twenty-two-five dash zero. Yes, first reading, to repeal chapter twenty-eight of the Article Eight City Administrator Ordinance, do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
Uh, moving on, Councilman Brumble.
Okay, DVW lost one. Part-time employee, he had to go back to school, and. We would like to see him, uh, replaced as a part-time employee, fifteen dollars per hour.
I shall second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
Uh, keep going, Councilman Brumble.
Okay, now we're getting down in here, to some of us that are not totally.
We'll help you out here.
Okay. Uh, apply for the allocated USDA funding for something, we have to have it, uh, three point two million.
Yeah, so it says, you know, allocating the funds, uh, any questions, anyone? All right, make the motion, sir.
I make a motion.
I should, second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Ister.
Uh, keep going, Councilman Brumble.
Okay, uh, notice to proceed on Packer Street. Uh, make a motion for that.
Second.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Uh, keep moving on, uh, change order, DVW building, I don't know who wants this, Councilman Brumble, Councilman Ister, whoever wants to speak about it.
Jim, I would, because you know what, what has happened, force a town, which means the work crew down there is gonna be doing work. And parts of the construction, they sit down, working down the sheet, and they're gonna be doing painting, they're gonna be taking.
Producing painting, removing sheeting, all the stuff that we could possibly do to lessen the cost, my, my guys are gonna be doing, we've already gone ahead and done a lot of the street work for them. So, so they're giving us a price, we've got to match what this change order is, so the work, we're doing ahead of time.
I don't want that number, because I did see it in the packet, but that's what's happening.
All right. Make it a motion?
Make that motion, yes.
Second.
Savage.
So, I'm sorry, just to be clear, we're decreasing the cost of projects?
Yes.
Then yes. I'm, I'm pretty sure it was in the motion.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Uh, moving on, Packer Street, contract, Brumble, Ister, whoever would like to take it?
Who got the contract?
We, uh, that was, paid it out of.
Mid-state paid.
Out of middle, out of Middleburg.
Yep.
All right. I don't know, is anyone on the top of it, making a motion, or?
Well, if you're making a motion to take them, uh, put on the contract for mid-state.
All right, so that motion, I will second.
Brumble.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to.
Newman Street, was approached by Mr. Newman, uh, Steve, you remember that name? He said he had bought a letter here some time ago. And just wondering, apparently he didn't get a sign.
Yeah, what we're trying to do, and when Lisa was down, we talked about this, we're trying to put a process together. I talked to Jody, who's that's right, she's real good with the history of the cities, we're trying to do a lot of unnamed alleys in the city, and help the nine-one-one center, if we've got names on them. Trying to do is come up with and develop names and bring them in here to council, put a process together, for naming all these alleys that are, that aren't named. So.
But back to my question, this question, I know I wanna get a phone call.
Listen, if the council tells me that's the name of a alley, I'm gonna make a name of the alley, so just, we're gonna promote motion, let's look.
Please, did we, he's, was this done before, or?
No, he just brought us some information, asked us to consider it, and we had talked it up, actually, including it in the change process.
We handled that, all right?
He brought us some information.
Like I said, if he brought up, and like you said, we were looking at, we have a lot of unnamed alleys, I'm.
So, are we, are we asking to vote on a name?
Yes, I'll make the motion, and we gave that, into Newman Alley, Newman Strade, Newman Alley.
Second, John.
Brumble, won't get assigned though.
Yes.
Please, no, machines now. Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Keep going, Councilman Ister.
Now, back to the orders, thirty-five dash one, we really don't intend to cut the piece for bad, it was brought up in discussion here. Chief McCracken, please chief, it was, it was told to us that might hinder for an application.
I, I don't.
Well, anyhow, we discussed it, I'll rescind that, because of the fact that you're saying it doesn't hurt us.
No, I don't, one arm, right, with the cost front, it does not hurt us.
Okay. I'll make that for a motion.
Second. Should we send it, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, to take it off the agenda?
No, we send, yeah, we send it off the agenda.
Like you wanna table it?
No, you don't have to do that.
So we just not saying we're not even doing it?
You can, you can table it, or you can just say, uh, make a motion not to vote on it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion not to vote on it.
That's the one I was seconding, to be clear.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Roche's.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on, Councilman Savage.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'll make a motion to pass resolution, uh, number two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-nine.
On hold.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, sorry, everybody, so, I, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to table the allocation of fifty thousand dollars to fire department pending, um, review overview.
Second.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Savage.
Apologies, so now I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two-zero-two-five dash zero-one-nine, the three seven MO.
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yep.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
And a motion to approve resolution number two-zero-two-five dash zero-three-zero, uh, the four oh one K M M O.
Second.
Brumble.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
And a motion to approve resolution number two-zero-two-five dash zero-two-one for PMers M M O.
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
And I will make a motion to approve, uh, the abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars, forty-five cents. Liquid fuels in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars, ninety cents, private grants in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars, ninety-five cents. And payroll in the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Brumble.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to discussions, IT, so as everyone knows, Innotek is starting to transition from InfraDad into their system. As we're looking at what we own, what InfraDad owns, what is going through its cycle, obviously, there's gonna be a cost to that. I mean, I know police station, they're, they're looking at their computers, and a lot of their computers are no longer salvageable, because they're just aging out, like, the laptops in their cars are ten years old. Um, a lot of this stuff is running slow, it's one of these things, brought up in January, now it's gonna hit us, we gotta start looking, what, what the cost is going to be to replace these outdated technology that's in the city. So for example, the phones that are owned by Innotek, are we gonna buy them or get new phones? I'm, I'm just using, because I have, I, I do have Innotek looking at prices of, you know, buying new what we need, uh, buying what we owe off InfraDad, all that stuff, so we have accurate cost. But, it's something we need to look at, because it's gonna be a bill, that's gonna, that we can't, oh, we can't push it down the road, like I said, I brought it up in January, now it's hitting us now. I do know we have about twenty thousand in interest from the ARCA funds, I think that's something we should look at, not right now till we get a number, but allocating towards the IT. Because, uh, right now, I don't think we have anything allocated, and it says something, when we eventually gonna switch over here in the next couple months. If we, hey, we're getting new phones, new computers, whatever, we gotta have an idea on where we're getting the money from. So I just wanna bring it up to council, because that's gonna hit us before the end of the year, and we have to have a plan ready to go for it. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions, comments, concerns, like Steve said, get new phones, because they don't work that great?
Have we, have we heard a timetable for Innotek, when they're gonna be done, with their only way to convert systems, and what the upgrade cost they're estimating to be?
Well, they, I, I spoke to them last week, and they're going, I just asked them to make numbers on everything, like, the cost to replace everything that we need to replace. The, the cost of replacing what we may need to buy off InfraDad, not at full price, so, they said they're, that mean the next couple weeks, but I'm assuming.
So they're gonna be coming around more offices yet?
Yeah, plus they already did their analysis before, they saw, like, you have X number of computers in your thing, they already have that information, so I think they're just gathering, because InfraDad's not being very nice and getting the information to them. So, they're playing, they're doing as much as they can with the information they got. So, that's about it. Questions, anyone?
So how many laptops do, does the police department have that for InfraDad?
I don't think, we don't know, because InfraDad wouldn't give them that information.
I don't know, I have no idea, there's so many people like. Computer wise, you know, we have desktops, and then we have laptops, I have a whole inventory list, and all serial numbers and everything, so, if they wanna run serial numbers to see if they're Internet, I can do that, I can do that to you tomorrow.
The problem is InfraDad isn't playing nice with Innotek right now, when they say, they're like, we're not gonna give you the information, because we don't want you to go sell to our competitor, of what this stuff is worth, so.
One good thing is just saying, we own them all.
Well, we don't, to us, it's out of order.
But by the same, with the neighborhood, you have to say, here's what we.
I guess that is an option.
Well, they share the inventory of what they gave us.
Yes.
How can I TV show you?
Right, not that great. But I did, yeah, believe it or not, it's making it happen, but I did ask from Innotek, if they did say it's theirs, like, if they own it, I wanted proof of that they owned it, like, saying, hey, email, email from, I'm just making this up here for myself, saying. Go out and purchase this computer on this date, so there is documentation showing that either they own it or we own it, or so, if they own something, so. Just wanted to bring it up to council, so we're aware, we are gonna have a technology bill here, eventually, at the end of the year, when we switch over.
Question, Innotek, you've been waiting for her.
Sale?
Sale.
Nothing, emailed me today, and I filed the complaint in the court system a month ago, and they must have gotten served, because she emailed me today and asked me to contact her, I wasn't there, I thought on my phone, but I was at football practice.
You're gonna be a hero.
Yeah, I'll contact them.
The only other thing, Mary, that I would add, as, as we're looking at our budgets, because in our line item, we all have, um, uh, IT line items, so we're gonna have to make sure that those monthly costs are accurately reflected for Innotek, because that's, that could be a big impact, I think it will be a big impact. So we just gotta make sure we're mindful of that.
And Lisa, you did get, like, their contact information on the billing stuff, for, two separate bills, police department and city hall, for where they call.
If you, I'm gonna reach out and just have them, like, send them to me, in the timeframe, I don't have to bring you to me.
Yeah.
Figure it out, but yeah, when I'm working on that, I might have some other things to talk about.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, anyone else on the IT portion? All right, moving, moving on to, uh, the fog.
Hi, Mr. Alex and I spoke today, and some good members talked here a couple weeks ago regarding the fog, is grease traps in the restaurants and so forth, which is a problem, because they drop the, further grease into the traps. To the regular traps, and of course, it blocks them, it blocks the sewer lines, hooking on the Tacker Street, it also splits the section of line, because of the grease problem. So, you guys went over with that.
We did, we did.
Yep, the senior packets, we should have it. I believe it was also emailed, uh, by the store. So we, we already have done this, we have our engineer, and they do the works for that engineering company, this is one of her portages, and she's done this for other places. I believe she also talked to Jackie, um.
Yeah, she told me.
She did. Jackie also talked something for Dan, at one time. So they worked together on some of this stuff, so, part of what was said in the newspaper, may not have been totally accurate. Um, because she did talk to somebody in the code office, and I believe John was there, so, for most people, where, um, the other thing is, is that. We have, we have already adopted this, for, for the hospital, for industry now, is that we need to adopt this, and we can see to adopt it as well. In order to have some type of punitive, uh, wording that will allow, if there's multiple violations of this. Because, it, it comes down to, uh, it costs us a lot of money in the factory, and we don't know how many other places this could be, uh, in businesses, or also, we need to figure something out there, so.
Well, one section is because of the grease.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's two hundred fifty thousand to correct that problem.
Yes, it's very expensive.
Yep. So I think Joel, you have to do is, find it on our side of the coin, so that it goes through the code office, in building permit, if you're doing X, and this comes into play.
And it, is here, if there's not a lot of information in the building codes, regarding this?
Well, and that, I did research on this, I didn't, I didn't have the actual, uh, versions, or wherever you did, yeah, until tonight, I looked at it a little bit, well, before the meeting started, but I haven't gone through it completely. But, the one, two things I can tell you are, I'm not sure the city can vote to penalize based on the municipal authorities' ordinance, or regulations. I know the municipal authority can't, does have the power to do that.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure why they would want the city to enforce their ordinance unless it's the actual enforcement.
Well, no, I thought. Well, part of it is, because the city has to do the inspections of the building, to make sure that, in the restaurants, to make sure that the grease traps, you know, maintenance, in there, and that stuff.
So that's what I meant, the enforcement end of it.
So, are these grease traps required, I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking, were these grease traps required previously for code, or anything like that, or business is gonna have to go out and purchase this? And I don't, I said, I don't know if it's a system?
They're gonna pack them up, they're, and figure out how to put a grease trap in, in order to evade any of the grease that's coming out, and going into the sewer lines.
I mean, is that, is that a hefty call, I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
It can be, it can be depending on how, how large the restaurant operation is.
You have to have certain places that they have to put it in.
You have to have certain places that they have to put it in.
Yes, and, you know, what it does is, is it catches all that and throws it down the sewer.
The, the one thing I can say for sure is that the municipal authority has the power to pass regulations and to enforce them. Apparently, it sounds to me like the issue's going to be in the compliance area of enforcement. And probably what we ought to do is give me until next meeting to talk to Todd Kirsten, or who is the municipal authority solicitor, and figure out exactly what they're asking of us, so that we know. And I can give a report on that the next meeting.
Yeah, basically, we all work before this, after the recent policy in code. The code department, that when they're going in here and placing these places, to make sure that there are the proper grease traps.
Like, I talked to Jackie to find out what businesses where they have to be placed.
She's certainly with it, because she wrote policy for it.
So then, would, so just say, someone's not doing what they're supposed to do, whatever it may be, we need to enact a fee or penalty, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, there's fees in the areas.
So, so you guys would enact them, then? Is that what you're saying?
They're beginning to, yes.
Okay, now, Joel.
It says in their thing that they, they have done that.
No, but what I mean, if we're the ones giving it, and they fight it, who's gonna be the one fighting? Do we need to fight, because we issued it, or they're the ones gonna fight it? You know they didn't issue it?
That's part of what I need to talk to Todd Kirsten about, because quite honestly, what I can see it happening is it comes down to our code office would have to go to a hearing to testify to enforce their regulation. Um, and that, I'm a little, I'm not uncomfortable with it, but I'm unfamiliar with it, so I'd wanna talk to Todd and see what they have been on.
And this, this is an issue that, that hurts both of us.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. It's just one of those things, like, as you always says, Mike, you know, it's nice to discuss these things before the fact that they're passed, and then we go back and change stuff, you know, as you always say. Joe, you have a.
Yeah, it, it is in the building code. When we converted modern business machines into a restaurant, under the International Building Code, we had, we were required to put a grease trap in. It, it, whatever the cost is now, I don't know, but it, we were required. It, it is in the building code already, so.
But, no, yeah.
Yep.
Anything else on the fog? Anyone? Did I give anything else to add?
No, just, we want, we wanna get this on radar, and get this resolved, because we need to go forward. That type of stuff makes a mess.
Yeah. Alright.
And I will say, they probably.
Uh, moving on here, like I said, more discussion stuff, uh, the following, we'll say committees or groups, uh, the city administrator, uh, was a part of, uh, who need to find replacement individuals. I do know, uh, the things, uh, may bother the different departments, like, I know there's stuff like Blight and ROA and different, uh, organizations like that. Um, Joel, do we need to, like, vote to do that, or can this, like, for example, the one for, like, well, like, you know, can John say, hey, my people are attending these? Jim can say this, Nate can say this, can I do that? Or do, there didn't need to be official votes?
It's gonna be different for each one.
Yeah.
Because for the planning commission, I think we have to vote to place somebody on there.
Okay.
The blood property review committee, we probably do not have to vote.
So just be quick to come back next meeting and say, hey, these are the individuals who'll be attending these things?
What I would do, quite honestly, is I'd do a slate and say, these are the individuals we are proposing to take over these positions.
Okay.
Here's a motion.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
That'll cover.
No, it's just, I mean, nor, normally, they're all gonna be in, in our self departments, because they figure out who's gonna be doing what. And then for the right to know backup, do we need to vote on that? Cause I know it's gonna be Jeff and Robin, do we need to? No, no, this, hey, put it out there, hey, these are now our right to know officers.
There, you can name those.
Okay, so I probably wanna do that now. Don't need, I don't need to vote to do that, can I just say that? Everyone would say.
Rob's, I think he did.
Yeah. Well, I didn't know if we needed to vote to do that, or, or say, hey, I'm naming Jeff and Robin, that way, someone has, someone knows who to go to.
Put it this way, it'd be safest just to vote on it, but I don't think you have to.
Okay, can I vote on it now, here, or discussion? Alright, is everyone okay with making Jeff and Robin the right to know officers? That way, one is out, someone else will fill in. Everyone okay with that? Alright, so I'll make the motion to make Jeff and Robin the, the right to know officer. Do I have a second?
Dave?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Brumbon?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to announcements, uh, the Art and Curiosity Fest will be Saturday, September thirteenth, in Shore Alley and Market, from eleven to four. SRI Sunset Festival and Cruisin' will be Saturday, September twentieth, in Merle Phillips Park, starting at twelve and ending at nine. Uh, Flat Screen TV Electronic Collection, September twenty-seventh, from ten AM to noon, at the ice skating parking lot. Uh, KBC Electric will be taking TVs. If they're under forty inches, it'll be twenty-five dollars. If they're over forty inches, it'll be thirty dollars. All electronic donations will be made to the Fire Police and, uh, Sunrise Police Department in the fall, in their fall events. Uh, put, uh, Music in the Park is every Tuesday until September thirtieth, in Cameron Park, starting at seven PM and going to about eight-thirty. Fireman Memorial End Parade will be Sunday, October twelfth, from two, starting at two PM, the parade ending at Cameron Park. Sunbury Fire Police Halloween Parade will take place Thursday, October sixteenth, at seven PM, the same round as last year. Steve, did you get everything you need for that road closure?
Yes, I'm gonna apply for it.
Okay, so I'll make sure. And then, the Police Department and Friends of Trunk or Treat and Touch a Truck will be Saturday, October eighteenth, from six to nine PM, at the Byers Park Lot. Is there any announcements for anyone else? Steve?
Yeah, the street department, we're gonna continue our paving over here in the city. Uh, there will be closures of different alleys as we go down through. As you guys are noticing, we're milling alleys out first. That goes faster than the, uh, the actual paving coming up behind. So we're going as fast as we can. We wanna do the best job we can, in case, of course, we, we battle any type of wet weather or anything, as well. Uh, the other thing is, please move your vehicles when we put the cones up, uh, and say, no parking. Uh, while we get up through there, we'll, we'll knock everything through, and then we'll open it back up, and then when we get to the paper, we'll close it again, the paper comes in. Um, in about two weeks, there'll be starting Packer Street. That's gonna be a closure. Uh, it'll be closing down around Zouiches area. Um, so you guys know, we'll, we'll get more about that coming up soon. We'll put an, uh, an announcement out on Facebook as well.
Any other announcements?
October eleventh, the tree planting, like I said, two o'clock. What would you call that, I mean, a, a sports.
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts.
Oh, by the tennis courts.
It's history in the making, won't be there.
Next meeting, we, two weeks from today, which will be September eighth, here at sixteen PM, with the budget meeting being held prior at five PM. Any other announcements? Are, is there any public comment at this time?
I have just a question. Um, so for the City Hall and President Project, who is finalizing all of that? I am just waiting for a final approval on, I think, X code's final invoice, it's done right through our money, and I need some signs and can't get the completion cert for some kind of.
Do you need to enforce it now?
You probably have. I'm just waiting for the city to sign. Nobody's signed off on it. I can send it back to me yet, so.
Hey, Lisa, if you can find them, give them to Jeff, and I'll get them signed. Is that working?
Yeah, I mean, I have to finalize bills. I don't, I mean, I have, I can send it over. I just didn't know.
Send, if you send them over to Jeff, that way I can send, sign them, and he'll get them right back to you.
Everything's done, everything's good, we're good to go on that project. I'll finalize it.
Everybody's on the construction portion, yeah.
I got one phone call, make electrician, cause of the no camera box.
Okay. Alright, I'll send everything over to the project.
Alright, thank you.
I'm gonna roll my head, but I just, that's how I'm over, um, allocating, I'm gonna get it back. And I'll support the consolidation.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, public comment? Please state your name. I'm, I'm gonna start with Jody to work my up, so please state your name, Jody.
I'm Jody. Uh, Jody Ocker, I'm, uh, representing Summer River Revitalization. I just want to mention a couple of things. Thank you to the city of Sunbury and apartments and all the crews that help us with River Festival. Um, I think we had a good event, and we were able to raise some money for SRI. Um, we have, you mentioned Summer Sunset coming up on September twentieth, and that is when we'll have the car show, the Cruisin' Car Show. I know people were looking for it with River Fest. We moved it to that day in a fall September twentieth. And then I also wanted to put in a plug for, um, September fifteenth, that's Monday, in the evening, a business dinner and discussion. This is our third annual business dinner. The first one, we had a guest speaker, the mayor of Pittston, talked about how they revitalized their downtown. The next one, we had, uh, Spud Marshall here, who took us through some exercises to reimagine Sunbury and downtown Sunbury. And then this one, the third annual, we are actually taking that vision that we worked on at last year's meeting, turning that act, that into action. So we've come up with a strategic plan, and we are one to unveil it to you. The target audience for this are city officials, elected officials, uh, business owners and property owners, and other stakeholders in the downtown primarily. We plan to also have some unveiling, you know, events where we'll have a community engagement with the community at large residents. Anyone, though, is welcome, but you must RSVP. So everyone should, the council should have received an email that had the link to where you RSVP. You may forward that to other people that you think are appropriate to come to that event. And then if anyone here would like to have that link and invitation, just come see me, and I'll get your email and give it to you. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name, Ter.
Alright, so, uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, Jim, has there been final decision on our sidewalks?
Last time I brought to council, it was rejected, and you and I spoke, and at this point in time, there's been no movement on it. I don't know what to say right now, Brian.
So, so what does that mean, no movement?
Because the city's not gonna get involved in it.
So then, options would be lawsuit, or what?
You and the contractor.
Okay. Um, Packer Street project, Steve, did you say they're starting at?
Another two weeks. We're a hundred percent sure we're still processing.
But they're starting, they're working everything else. Starting at Fort and Packer and going back towards Front Street?
Well, we are going all the way up to Kramer. So it's, it's, we'll start at the active set of tracks and go down towards Kramer. And there will be some daylight closures on Fort Street, single lane traffic stuff.
Okay.
Uh, won't be fully closed. Uh, but our, our intention is this year to get that end of the project done. At the same time, uh, UGI needs to get in. We're waiting on them. They're, they're finishing up their design stage. They need to re, redo their, their gas line down through there on the upper end, which would be from Sus, from Susquehanna Avenue all the way down Packer. There's a little substation past the old tracks.
Right.
They've gotta redo that gas line. They're gonna be doing that this year yet. Um, but that won't happen within a closure. That'll be daylight signing going down through there.
Okay, I was just trying to gauge, like, would they be, work being done there?
Yeah, and then next year, we'll be firing up first thing in the spring. We'll start at Susquehanna, and as long as we're done with everything on the other side, and we'll, we'll start at Susquehanna and go all the way down to the new tracks. And that'll be full depth reconstruction down through there for the first time that roads ever.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Well, Steve, there's gonna be nighttime construction going on at, at Fort and Packer. Maybe that's what's requiring that be done.
No, there's, there's, in, in the, in the, uh, the permit that we got, we're allowed to do it during.
Where, where we just got from the authority is, it's gonna be helping, right?
I'll have to look. They must, maybe they had, get issued something different, but I know the permit, when it was issued, uh, they had us look at item number three and item number twenty-three, with the permit, both of them, it just said, single lane usage. They didn't say anything about night, but it might be a night, we'll see.
Well, if it does change it, we can put an announcement out there.
Yes, we can, on the.
Or before, if anyone, Steve finds out. Alright, any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Victoria Rosenkrantz. Um, first of all, thank you for, um, not changing the team police officers ordinance. Um, so my question would be then, on the COPS grant, I spent a lot of time reading today, and here is your information on the grant. About cities, municipalities, underscaped law enforcement agencies operating in low budget and strength under COPS hiring program. Here's that information on the grant. So my question is, so based on this grant, the COPS grant, was this grant applied for? Did you guys finalize that?
I didn't have any with backer.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
There's a back sheet, isn't it? And, okay. Okay, great, that's one. But anyway, so there, there is a fact sheet on the, on the website. I, I guess my other question was, um, last meeting, reviewing video, it was discussed about, uh, reimbursement, um, for the police department of, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars. Does that reimbursement apply for? For, uh, task force, overtime, and all of that? Is that taken care of by an outgoing, or is it? I would have to look into that, if you ask me, I'm not sure. Is that though, is that for you?
He never pays the.
That's what he did, okay. That was, yes, Travis and I had previously talked about that recently.
Because there's a lot of information on the treasurer, and my understanding is he didn't wanna do the training, which is very disheartening, because it's a little tiny minutes of training. Then he's standing, you know, it's really disheartening, then outgoing treasurer, which is not use something for twelve thousand seven hundred dollars for a.
I wasn't here for that. I didn't see you, I just saw the address. I have already talked about what we can do going forward. I know, but I'm just bringing it to your attention, because this is what I talked about in the very beginning, when I said about, for the citizens first. So, just to reiterate that. Um, so I guess another question is, just wondering about ICE rank audit. Um, I, I, there was discussion about that, and I was at meetings, and my understanding was that, and I could be wrong, so please correct me. Was that audit sent to the attorney general's office, or was that audit done by someone else?
So when we started the investigation, we did end up going to a, a local accountant here in Sunbury to do a forensic audit on that, and the different procedures that we're having. And I know, I met with them, they asked me with me, and I know they met with other person that was involved in that. I can't, I don't know who they met with, but I know that is still in the works, and sometimes they call me on, hey, get, I need this contact information. So I didn't know that's still going on. I don't know where they're at on it, but that's still taking place.
Okay, thank you. My next question, my next question is, last time, uh, members, you had a question, and I have seen this out on social media. There's been a question about pickleball courts in the city of Sunbury. And then it was discussed at the last meeting, and I ended up with a trip with this budget or the other one. But, um, that citizens have access to the pickleball courts, and all they have to do is ask for a key. How do we get that key?
Yes.
And that was disseminated out to the citizen's house? Do the citizens in Sunbury know that they can't gain access to the pickleball courts, that they have to ask for a key? What do they ask for the key?
The, first of all, during the summer months, the OP playground is open. There's a lot of time. Not to my knowledge, not anybody played pickleball this summer.
Yeah, but you said, your quote was, you just said, ask for a key. So I'm asking, where do they go to get, where are the hours for that? Who do they speak to? Because that's gonna be an integral part of the, for the citizens. So, I, I hope you guys can figure that out. I'll ask it in next meeting, I'm not gonna be, be in that force on that one. My next question is, um, cameras in the city of Sunbury. Um, fifty surveillance cameras, and my last, and, uh, so it's, last thing put out in the GILDA was thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars was spent on cameras. Would that go, did it want to cancel?
Yes, where, where, yes, it was. Where were the cameras?
I mean, you tell me where the cameras are, because, um, you should know. You can tell me, because there's twenty-seven cameras, and then there's new, this being cameras. And the price tag is thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. So that, and so there's contracts for this, for all these cameras, there's a contract for the, Mr. Tambores, right?
First of all, there's a project that the police department, I'm not sure of those numbers. That's why I'm asking you which ones you.
I'm asking for, I'm asking where the thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars, so what I'm asking, my most important question here is, is there a contract for all of this work that's been done with all the other practices? So there's contracts for all of this?
No.
No, why not?
Well, because, because it's professional services, it doesn't need a contract.
Because it's under what?
Professional services.
Under what price?
The, the risk.
So we just have Storchmo, or, or, excuse me, Mr. Tambores come in and say, put these in.
The council made motion to have these cameras installed, and they voted, you know, so.
And they voted on thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars?
They voted off the whatever camera number they were doing, and I think it happened a couple times.
Yeah, and so that, so, what's what I'm asking is, so we have no contracts, we're doing, so we're doing.
We didn't have a lot.
You're talking over me. So you're doing good paid contracts with that amount of money in our city with no contracts? Where's the accountability for this work? There's no paperwork, something happens, whatever. That's a lot of money. Okay, I'll, I'll let you know, I'm not doing that on my back. Alright, um, the next one, so actually, it's for the municipal party, when in meetings?
This is the municipal party, they want.
Okay, wait, okay. Alright, I'll look it up on my thing. So, so I guess what my comment will be then, is for the city, and also working with the municipal authority. And I hope that your, the city council will encourage the authority to be, um, having conversations with businesses, and not just coming along and welcoming them. Um, with, you know, what is that cost gonna be? And I'm not saying I don't agree with grease traps, because I do, because it's very costly, whatever. Um, but I hope that there's some, some encouragement in council, along with the authority, to make sure that businesses are aware of that, and what is the expectation for that. Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please state your name.
I'm Ben Munner, um, and I just want to thank Steve Welker for the work that's being done on the alleys, because I live right by one, and it's, and it's great. Because I almost lost a granddaughter in one of those poppers. Um, and also, the other thing that I'd like to say is, um, I know that there's a lot of times, there's a lot of questions and things discussed and that kind of thing. And what I am asking at this point is that, instead of being controversial in all of our questions, and instead of being, being answered in snarky and snide comments, I really wish that everyone would just work together, because if we have a problem, we can work together to come up with a solution. And also, if you don't have a solution, and you can't contribute to that solution, then you really shouldn't be saying anything. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Alright, adjourn this meeting. All right, adjourn this meeting.